Alright guys, it's 5:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and start our work session. We're gonna ask Pastor Paul to open us up with prayers tonight. That's okay, you look so nice and we got your family here with you tonight.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that we have to come together. What a beautiful day that you have given us to do your work. Father, I pray your hand be upon this feet upon each individual here. Father, just as each one, I continue to do your work, your service each day. Praise this in Jesus' holy name, amen.
Thank you so much for that. And thanks to everybody who always just let me call on them. They never even fight me or they just stand on us and give us the prayer. So I do wanna start tonight off by saying, I did not approve this agenda. I got it when everybody else got it. So, we're gonna just go down the list. And the protocol is that every time, before an agenda is set out, it is approved by council president, no matter who that is. At this time, I was not able to approve this agenda. Of course, now. Okay, so we're gonna start with number one. It says, Luanne Anderson, accounting manager to discuss financial reports. Hey, Luanne, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
I have very preliminary financial information as of March 31st. The reason that it's very preliminary is that the audit, of course, has not been completed. And there are year-end entries, pardon?
Yeah, I wanna ask that too, since you mentioned the audit. What is the timeline? Cause I know originally, we were on schedule to have it finished by January of this year. So now here we are, almost in the sixth month of this year. So what is the timeline looking like?
They should have their draft of our financial reports by mid-June. And then the actual audit should be to us by the end of June. So it's just, there's just been a lot, been a lot of correcting and adjusting and analysis.
So have you been a part of that process?
Very little, I just kind of, Melody could pull me in to help out.
Cause we're not gonna have a timeline.
That's gotta be doing.
Yeah, and also too, we're gonna have to actually determine all this timeline here. Especially since we put people in place in that office, you know? We need to discuss how soon that can be done, so we can then know this contract.
I think that she was approved to stay until the end of June, if I'm not mistaken?
It was recommended.
Okay.
It was recommended.
Okay, so yes, we need to discuss that. I would definitely love for her to stay longer. That's just me. So the audit, like I just said, should be totally completed by June 30th, hopefully before. But we'll need it, of course, to start our budget process, which is right about that same time. So when I get good financial reports for 2024, I might not wait till the first council meeting after June 30th. I might just present those, because this is all preliminary. Our bank account reconciliations are all completed through March 31st. There are two accounts that still need some tweaking. Some of them are actually into April, so we're in good shape on those.
Okay, so have you been a part of that process as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so now we're on schedule, so we can get those balanced every single month, except the fees that needed a little bit of adjustment?
Yes, there are two big ones that we're still basically working on. We're real close, but yeah, I'll be ready to settle bank accounts going forward.
Okay.
Okay, the reports that were sent to, that was a week ago. And since then, we've had a few updates. And I found some reports that were in a better format. So that's why I gave you a paper packet. Everybody's got one, Shannon's got one, Claire's got one. So I wanna start going through those. The first one is fiscal year 2025 projections. That should be your first paper. Just as a summary, if you look at the bottom line, 2025 is coming in real close to 2024. It's also coming in real close to 2024. So really not a lot to comment on there. It's right where we need to be.
So?
Sound good? Have any questions on that?
Should I leave those? What are those? Those in 2023?
Need a minute to look at that or something? The next paper is the remaining budget for 2025. It's all departments, the 2025 budget and what's left remaining in the budget. And then the percent that's remaining in the budget.
Question, is this uncommitted remaining that may not, has any of it been committed and not been spent? Or is it what's left that's on track?
It's committed, so this is what we're on track as of March 31st. So of course, March 31st is six months in, so it should be about 50%. And we're really in decent shape. Some of the departments need to be watching their budget closely. Some of them have some budgeting.
Does this include payroll?
Yes. The next sheet is, on one sheet, it has the capital assets, what we've spent as of March 31st, that's broken down by item. It also shows the total in the bond warrants as of April 30th. Cause we just got those statements, so I was able to put the current amounts there. These, as far as the bond warrants, the ones 2015 through 2020, according to Melody, we need to close those out, because you're not supposed to keep them that long. Basically, they're earning interest and that's not what bond warrants. So we really will only have, pretty soon, we'll only have the two current ones.
Okay, so, hold on, she said we needed to close them out. So is this the balance that's left in them?
Yes, that's what's there as of April 30th.
Okay, so when you say close them out, what do you mean? We're gonna do with the balance that's left in them?
I will have to discuss that, I've missed a million dollars on it.
Yeah, I don't think you can, because I think the bond money can only be spent on, yeah, restricted. Shannon, can you get us a list of stuff that this money can be spent on, so that we can plan accordingly? Cause there may be some things that come up that we can use this money for. Cause we can't move it, we can't.
Yeah, there are some projects, I have that in mind. Well, I don't know.
That's fine, we'll just get a list on what all, we can use it for. And we'll just look at the plans we have and just.
Make sure it wasn't already committed or something.
Right, yeah, so yeah, it's a million dollars. Then, let's see. Okay, the balance sheets by fund, it says general ledger balance sheet. And then it fits a page for each fund. The first one is 010, general fund, and then it goes all the way through all of our funds. In your file that I sent a week ago, that's in your computers, this replaces that. Because that's in a format that's really hard to understand. So I did get them, that's why I had to print them out for you. So this is helpful, it gives you how much cash is available, what your payables are. The number that I circled at the bottom is, in the business world, that would be your equity. It's basically the value of the fund. Really doesn't, there's no cash value in that number. It's just basically the value of that fund. So we've got a page for each, each fund.
But there's a negative balance in the capital improvement fund, so what does that mean?
Negative, okay, several, there are four or five that have a negative balance. And those have, here in the adjusting entries that the auditors will do, that'll clean them out. So those are preliminary. You wanna take a minute to look through those or just? If you have any more questions?
I have a question, I think it's page 24 in here, when it comes to the CBG grant. That we used to, it's 24 on here.
So this replaced that?
I mean, I don't know where it's at in here, and I made my notes.
Do you see the, you see the name of the fund or the number of the fund? Where it says account type?
Like, oh, nine zero, oh, eight one. Description? Looking for account type. There it is, right there.
Yeah, just the number or the under description, it should say the name of the fund, like, I'm looking at.
Grant fund.
Grant fund, you see the number?
It's a CBG grant.
Is it 100?
100.
Or A05?
Yes, sir, what's your question?
There's 19,000, $19,600 remaining on this grant. When do the funds have to be used by, you know?
I do not know that, might need to find out.
All right, we need to find that out and need to see if we can use those to finish tearing down, maybe some vacant housing.
Okay.
Well, on ours, on the, here circled is the equity is only 176.
Right, but there is cash there. So that's, that's the number that we're interested in. We spent 19,670, we spent that on.
That's right.
Okay.
When does it have to be spent?
And when does it have to be spent?
As far as I know, there's no restriction on that. But I'll check that too.
I thought we got the grant, there was. I thought, check on that this minute, because I, Ms. Luanne, cause I thought when the grant was given, that there was a date that it had to be spent by or we didn't. I could be wrong, but I don't think I am.
Okay, I'll check on that too. Any questions on these balance sheets? Okay, the other thing is, oh, on the second. The first balance sheet that's in your packet, it's not in the paper ones. I just wanted to point out, it's page three of your PDF file, I believe, page three. It says September 30, 2024, but it should be 2023. I just wanted to point that out in case you're looking at it. Okay, we have the bank account reconcile balances and the CD balances are on your PDF file, pages 34 and 35. Those are as of, like I said, March 31st. Any questions on any of that?
I don't.
I'm sorry, I was asking of Ms. Shannon, you know, she was sending this to overtime important. I don't know, I may have overlooked it. Did we ever get that?
I, I don't have it, she didn't.
But it wasn't included in all of that?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought you were gonna.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I thought you were gonna present that, I'm sorry. Okay, the last thing is the detailed budget versus actual. It starts on PDF page 38. For every account in every department, it gives you the budget, actual, what's left and the percentage remaining. So it's very detailed information, but it's very helpful if you wanna know exactly in this department, in this account, what have they spent, what's left. It's a long report, but it's, the detail is maybe very helpful.
Okay, in this, and since we see the percentage on what's left in these budgets and we're halfway through the year, this is why it's so important that we don't be amending the budget and trying to move things around and trying to ask for extra money at the end of the year.
Yes.
For things that were budgeted, budgeted.
Yes, we need to be real careful about that. Especially in the ones that had less than 50% left. Of course, now we're almost two months more than that, so we need to look at it.
All right, I don't have any questions right now. Luanne, just make sure the notes that you made, just make sure we have that information at the next meeting.
Okay.
Just so we can plan for those funds. We don't wanna lose them, like usable losing.
Okay, all right, hold on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the list is fire chief, they asked us to discuss a budget amendment for travel training conference. GL010-530-42510-00 to employee expense GL010-530-42518-0000 in the amount of $2,700 to cover the cost of required employee annual physicals. And Lee informed me that, he told you nobody was gonna be here.
Nobody's able to be here.
So Mayor, do you know, or Shannon, do you know what line item he's trying to move this from? And is this an annual cost that we budget for each single year?
It's an annual cost that he budgets for every year. And he's moving it from travel training to employee expense.
But it was accidentally put in travel training?
No, I'm not sure exactly.
Just because of the turnout here ended up costing more?
Right, the turnout years, that money he planned to spend on physical.
Okay, so that's two problems then. Because that means that they spent some money out of their budget that wasn't authorized by council. Because he shouldn't have been able to buy it if he didn't have enough money. He should have came back to the council and requested an increase.
No, that's what he's, he's requesting, because of it being the process that it was, it cut into his physical money. That's why he's requesting for the money to be transferred.
You're not understanding what I'm saying. It can't cut into his physical money, because we budgeted for the total amount, the $25,000. We didn't, we didn't pull any money out of his budget, remember? We didn't pull any money, we pulled it from the general fund. So he had some money in his budget for, specifically for turnout year. And then he said the additional was $25,000. So therefore, this can't be for turnout year. Because if this is for turnout year, that means somebody authorized to pull some money from a line item that they shouldn't have.
Well, this is for physicals.
This is for physicals, yeah.
Money wasn't there to cover the physicals.
Because it was spent on something else. So therefore, that's the problem, does that make sense?
We approved the turnout here, though, for that cost that it was, though.
I get, you know.
I get what you're saying, but yeah, but like, I don't think, I think that would be more on not exactly their fault, because we knew how much the turnout here was costing, but we didn't know how much the physicals were costing. We didn't know it was gonna be over. It's on the same line item, the turnout gear was bought from the employee expense, right? So therefore, the physicals come out of that employee expense line.
Well, and that's why it's costing what it is.
Does he have money in travel training in that account?
Even if we do that, he's gonna ask for money for travel and training. What I'm saying is, when he came to us with a number, we budgeted for a specific dollar amount. If it wasn't enough for the turnout year, cause we thought, I thought we were saying, how many turnout gears would we get for $25?
Six.
Six, and that was a total of six. You see, I just wanna make sure I'm not sounding.
I already know the line item.
And the only thing would be, if maybe the turnout gear was more expensive than what they had been quoted. Or like Laura says, the actual physicals were cost more than what he thought they were going to be.
But the turnout gear couldn't have been more than quoted, because we authorized a certain amount.
And we had that for by then.
But if the physicals were more than what they were last year, and that's what you used to budget it for for this year, then that might be doing. Remember that, this year, they had some damage in multiple fires, and so they had to get extra.
I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, and what you're saying is true. But what I'm saying is, if that was the case and he needed more, then he should have, he should have came back and asked for more money for turnout here. He can't use money for something else to cover the cost and then get us to replenish the money.
Or they was allowed to take from one line item to the other, but it wasn't.
Nope, not without council approval. And I was very specific during budget time, we budgeted for items, not dollars.
We all agree.
Yes, we all agree. Do you understand what I'm saying more?
I do, but I don't, I still think that he didn't know that the cost was gonna be additional for the physicals. And that's his statement that it.
But the way it really should be done, he should ask for an increase in the expense to cover physicals. If that's what was budgeted and he can't afford it because it was more.
We're kinda shooting in the dark here, cause nobody's hearing him.
Ah, there you go, actually. So therefore, we can't do anything, because there's no law to here to.
Right, get moving, all right?
Next item, but did he order the turnout here? If anybody's.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
He ordered it.
Next item, Lieutenant Renee Clemens to discuss contract was valid metrical at no cost to the city. They utilize facial recognition from ABC's mug shots and sex offender registration for help identifying suspect. Hey Renee, how are you?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
I know that you're probably tired of seeing, this doesn't cost you anything. This company has came to us and they utilize this system throughout the United States. They'll actually put up at no cost to us, one camera in the city. What it does is connects to our software, pulls our mug shots, sex offenders and warrants. So if anybody that is in that system comes across anywhere in the United States, we get a notification that. We've already utilized the system for identification for suspects that have committed thefts at different places. We put the pictures that come from the security cameras into the system, notifies us that they've got a match. So if someone's been arrested before and we put their picture into the system, we'll get an immediate notification or identification of the person that is. But it doesn't cost us a dime.
Oh wow, that's over the whole United States? Oh wow, that's cool. Okay, well, thank you Renee, I don't have any issues with that. All right, next is number four, Cassie Epperson to discuss a budget amendment from other professional fees, to legal fees in the amount of $1,537 to cover the invoice for Spain and General. So Cassie, I got a question on this. So last time, I think the last two times, we, is this where we pulled the money from the last time? So I thought there was no more money in here, because we helped cover some of that cost. I thought you pull what you could pull from other professional fees to help cover legal fees.
If you remember, last time I had to ask for a total amount of $50,000. Y'all only approved the exact amounts, and so it's like $30,000 something thousand was approved. Now this is just another $1,000. Y'all told me to come with each time.
I get it, but it's not making any sense. But we, we've been increasing the budget though, right? We've been increasing the budget.
We're moving it from one line.
Ah, so how much, how much money is left in this other professional fees line item? That would be nice to know.
Right now, what I'm showing is if, if you were to approve the $1,537, it would bring that other professional fees down to $37,653.
So $37,700 or $37,000?
$37,000, yes.
Okay, and what, and remind me again, what's paid out of that?
So the other professional fees, those are the items that are taken care of as far as any type of, I'm trying to think, the professional fees that would have been paid out if we had done the, the fix, you can't. The, anytime we have next-site contracts that are committed and done, that all those fees that are associated with it, it's paid out there. It does leak in enough to take care of a couple of those.
Okay. All right, I got another question on legal fees. We need to close that PO for, for Hyde, what is it, Hyde and what else?
Alexander.
Yeah, Alexander Hyde, that PO needs to be closed. We don't need an open PO for them anymore.
Can you come out?
Yeah, so, all right. Yeah, I know it, but I want to make sure that I ask, and y'all can agree on this.
I agree.
We don't need any open PO, we don't need any open POs for legal fees.
We just consult with the city attorney, and it's okay.
All right, all right, you're up next again, Cassie. So this next item, number five, Cassie Epperson to discuss the development of maintenance of the city website. Documents are attached for city councils review. Three vendors have submitted proposals, they are Revise, Apogee and Civic Plus. So in my opinion, I don't think this is something that I think we should entertain right now. And Lee, I know you have some thoughts on the city website. And you guys maybe wanna, as Nate said, you may wanna just wait till a new council come in and propose this.
Yeah, y'all did, tentatively, not the, not the actual version of the contract, but y'all tentatively gave me the ones in the capital.
For this?
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, for sure, well, I just, I just don't think, I don't even remember doing this, I guess we did. So what's wrong with the website now? The only reason is it hasn't been updated, just because.
Well, you hadn't gotten the information, right?
Haven't gotten the update from the city clerk's office in six months.
So we're behind on that, and that's not on you, Shannon. So I mean, you, I think we've had, how many, city clerk? Four.
Can I share one piece of information that I found out?
Go ahead.
So in 2024, the federal government changed the ADA guidelines a lot. And the city website has to meet those guidelines by, no, no, by the later than 2027. Otherwise, we are subject to being fined $75,000 for the first offense. And those particular guidelines apply to government websites.
I think it'd still be enough time by then, once a new council come in.
Most of these projects take a five to, six to eight months deal on the website. So something to keep in mind that we wanna be compliant well before that deadline.
Thank you, Cassie.
Hold on, please, I'm looking at some of the quotes. Can you spit off some of it, so I see $36,000 here for one quote?
Yes.
That's typical range, $34,000.
Well, if you'll notice, the first one is $12,690 for the first year. The second one was $16,750. So those, those came in much longer than what we were expecting. One of the things that I requested in the design, what I was asking for, you'll notice there's a secondary request. As it's been apparent, we need the ability for the community to be able to connect, report their problems, get current updates, that sort of thing. That secondary request is called a public service request. On Civic Plus, it's called click see fix. It gives the opportunity to literally have a map, drop a pin, say, hey, here's a pothole. And the reporting person would send that in, it would go straight to the street department. Street department, once they've handled that issue, would send back the message and it would show this issue's been addressed this way. Or, you know, we looked at it, found out it was this or that. It gets communication back to the reporting person.
Who, who, Mayor, who manages the website?
So as far as the build is concerned, they would work with us to build. As far as updating the information, each department would be able to go in and update their information.
So there's like, you know, there's not one person at City Hall who manages to lay out the design and all that kinda stuff?
I've been in the form of contact as far as talking with all of them.
I don't, I don't have an issue with it, and I don't see a problem with it. But again, that's something, like you said, it takes a while to do, so. I know people have been wanting something like that, I don't see any issue.
I know, but I think, I don't know.
Way of the future.
I know it, but I just.
It takes a lot of, a lot of issues that we get phone calls with off of RMP, is what I look at it.
Well, it may be a great idea, but we weren't consulted in any of the RMP, so we don't know what the requirements are. And we're paying to have something built that we haven't been involved in designing.
And then too, Cassie, you've already decided to assume the responsibility of it. So that means, I mean, you've already, you just sat there and said it's basically gonna be on your place. So, and so you're gonna hold everybody accountable, so you're gonna hold everybody accountable for signing up and logging into this and getting everything set up?
Well, I think that's part of the six-month process too, to work those, iron those details out.
Yes, training the individuals that are being used, and that's all part of that process. Now, one thing to keep in mind right now, with Revise, they're offering a five-year lock price each year. For five years, no rate, no fee, that's that $4,100 a year if we go with the public service request. For Apogee, they were offering a discount on the price if we had them assigned before May 31st. And Civic Plus and Apogee both, they have already said it may be subject to increase each year for the management of the.
Everything's gonna go up every year.
But we're nice to lock this in flat lease home here.
So what is, let me ask you this, so the total installation plus, I'm sure there's gonna be some maintenance of the website, and is anybody gonna come out and, I mean, do they have to install these on our computers? I mean, so, so what is it gonna be?
It would be web-based, so that you would be able to go onto the website. And there's a backend side of it that you would log in and manage website from.
And so, but each department head would be responsible for managing their own? So have you met with the department heads and talked about this?
We have talked about it for several years, just different ways of how it would be handled.
But not specifically with these quotes that you, that you have?
With Revise, we've talked about it specifics. With Apogee and Civic Plus, we have.
All right, well, let's do this, let's do this. Let's go back and see, maybe we can just go and sit down with each department head over the next couple of weeks. Um, let's go back and see, maybe we can just go and sit down with each department head over the next couple of weeks and let's just see if this is something we, we're gonna do, how it can be implemented. Cause I, I need to see the whole process from the beginning. And it does sound like it's a lot, and you're the person that's gonna assume that responsibility again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Tiffany, how about, how about addressing it in the next, if the mayor wants to, address it in the next, um, department head meeting?
Well, not, I mean, Kathy can, I think she could just go one-on-one and do it in a problem. Either you just go one-on-one and just decide, just send it out to everybody and, I don't know, maybe you can send them some sort of, um, question and get some sort of feedback from it just to see if, how it's gonna fit into our life.
So in that respect, you're willing to know who they're gonna designate from each department?
Yeah, because somebody has to be responsible for this, because I mean, it's, it's not cheap. It's something we're gonna, um, put some resources into and spend some money on. We need to know exactly who's gonna be responsible, who's gonna do this. We can't just put stuff on the department heads and.
And, and we've also gotta have a process. Just because the department head wants something on the website, doesn't mean we want it there.
Right.
And somebody's gonna have to look at all the content, validate it, make sure it's spelled correctly, that it's got the right branding. So I guess you're adding that to your job description.
I don't mind going in. To me, this has been a need for several years. And I don't mind stepping up and, and taking care of maintaining and. The good thing that I like about two of the, the vendors is they've offered in-person training for whoever's gonna be managing the website, so we all get the same.
Yeah, that's what I just asked, though. Are they gonna come out? Okay. And also, yeah, I think you should just do that and just get some feedback and keep in, you know, mind that sometimes, you know, you may not be here every day, so who's gonna, who's gonna do it when you're not here?
And are you recommending the lower-cost one as the one?
I am, I am. Revise is actually the same company that does the Talladega County website. And they have, they have been in partnership with Talladega County for ten years.
Yeah, because I mean, it's, it's, it sounds really nice and it sounds like, again, you know, moving into the future, but we don't wanna set something up and then we don't hold up our end of the deal and people submitting things on this website, and then we drop the ball because we don't know who's supposed to be watching it or monitoring it.
Or we give a photo down the road and we can't avoid it.
So let's just go back, let's just, um, revisit this again in two weeks' time. So after, with all your, um, your feedback, your implementation process, and what else was it I asked you? And who's gonna be responsible for this stuff? It's only on, um. Yeah, it's only on here.
It's only on?
Yeah. Alright. Thank you, Kathy.
Do you email us these quotes?
Sure.
They're emailed?
Uh, speaking of emails, a lot of people that were left off of the, um, distribution list. Uh, yeah, a few, because we had to, um, I had to send it to that.
I got one.
Okay, yeah, so a lot of people were left off, so.
This was the wrong email address.
Yeah, and then somebody named Lee something got an email that was toward them, that does lead that report, so we need to make sure.
I did a copy and paste. I want it was done from previous ones, so I'll have to go back and look and see what the,
Okay.
what they had sent, who they had sent out to previous.
Okay, alright. I forgot about that. Alright, number six, Police Chief Rondell Musso likes to recognize a couple of officers of the Solocaga Police Department. H.G. Carrie tonight.
Good to yourself?
Pretty good.
Good, good. The department at times like to recognize excellence. And so, uh, the first one here is overdue. Captain McNeil. I have not formally introduced you all to Captain McNeil. He was, um, promoted to captain for the A, so I'm gonna take the time to do that now. Jason McNeil has been promoted to the Captain Solocag Police Department. McNeil has been with the Solocag Police Department for twenty-eight years. He was hired on March twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven as a patrol officer. He was promoted to sergeant in two thousand and two, and was assigned to the Northeast Precinct, which was located in the true court. In two thousand and three, he was promoted to lieutenant and was assigned various assignments, including patrol commander and chief of that, Gator. Um, during his time as lieutenant, he was assigned as patrol commander and now captain. His job performance has been exemplary for both the department and the city as a whole. Jason's a local guy in which there are many community with him and his family. He comes from a long line of family dedicated their services to the city, and I believe we are blessed to have him. So what I would like to do at this time is read his certificate of appointment. To all who shall see these persons greeting. Knowing that reposing special trust and confidence and fidelity and abilities of Jason McNeil, I do hereby appoint him as captain in the Solocag Police Department. In accordance with the ordinance of the city of Solocaga, chapter two, article three, section two, sixty-two, you are to discharge carefully and diligently the duties of a foreman as instructed by the chief of police and to the public traditions and core values of the Solocag Police Department. You are to exemplify a high degree of moral courage and dedication to the Solocag Police Department, which will serve as an example to all employees and all citizens of this great city. Signed, Rondell Musso, chief of police.
Congratulations, Kathy.
Now, we both would like to recognize our officer of the year. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight for prior engagement, but Corporal Investigated Sherry Doctor was selected by his peers. Now, that name may be familiar to you because not only had, um, Corporal Doctor, he has a doctorate in theology, but he taught himself French Creole during the Haitian migration, as it turns, so that the department could talk and speak without having to use outside interpreters or electronic means. Again, like I said, I just want to mention, he's officer of the year. Corporal Lacy. Commendation for Corporal Amulatin, top gun award recipient in twenty twenty-four. The Solocag Police Department is proud to recognize Corporal Amulatin as a representative of the top twenty-four top gun award. This prestigious honor is awarded annually to the officer who demonstrates exceptional proficiency in firearms, training and performance. Corporal Lacy distinguished himself by achieving the highest scores in the department's annual firearms qualification, patrol rifle assessment, rigorous combat course. His dedication to training, precision and tactical excellence reflects the highest standards of law enforcement professionalism. Matter of fact, uh, I plan to get the rest of us using technology to be able to do what he does with his naked eye. And, um, bittersweet moment here, Captain Ledbetter. Chaplain Ledbetter's been our chaplain for years. He retired this year. And, uh, we hate to see him go, so we have a couple of things for him. First, there's his certificate of retirement. Chaplain Mark Ledbetter, had served with faithfully and con void for twenty-plus years, was retired from the Solocag Police Department. Your dedication and unwavering commitment to the department and community have left an indelible mark. Thank you for being a gentleman, gentlemen. We hope that greets a special place, Merrill.
Thank you very much.
Now, um, I wanna give you something personally from me. You have been a great unit toward me, no matter what time of day, what hours, um, you know. Sometimes people need a present, not a prescription, and you've been a great present. So this is something from me, my name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you so much for that, Chief, and congratulations, guys. Alright, next on our list is HR Specialist Jane to discuss the proposed new and revised job description for the city clerk and finance department.
Madam President, may I interrupt?
Uh, sure.
After.
Jane, still come up to the podium. Speaker, to the podium.
Tell what we're doing.
Good, how you doing tonight, Jane?
I'm doing fine.
After reviewing the proposed job descriptions transmitted to the city council at nine seventeen today, I do not believe we should consider this item, so there is no need for discussion. In Solocaga, the positions of municipal city clerk and municipal treasurer are set out in the Code of Alabama, have been combined by ordinance, and the single city clerk treasurer has the duties and responsibilities of both positions. There are no separate city clerk and treasurer positions. The city clerk is also the treasurer. Under position-specific duties and responsibilities, the current job description labeled city clerk includes designated as treasurer for the city of Solocaga upon approval by the city council. This morning's proposed job descriptions removed that provision, but not, was not highlighted as one of the many changes reflected, reflecting this deletion. This strikes me as incredibly sneaky, which is unfortunately consistent. For a variety of reasons, it is not in the best interest of the city to create new positions and new departments. Additionally, it is troubling that you are proposing changing a job description for a position for which you have applied. This seems like a possible self-benefiting ethics violation. I respectfully request we not discuss this.
I see.
Hey, that's fine.
You don't want comments? Alright, next on the list is, um, Stephanie Engel to discuss personnel use for the animal shelters to include an additional kennel test. When the money is coming from unused salaries for the remainder of the fiscal year, position will be budgeted for next year. Uh, I, I have a question about how we broke this.
I've got several questions.
Shannon, did you write this up like this to state? It says position will be budgeted for next year. Are you saying that if we're, um, able to get you some help, you're gonna request that it be budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Alright, Stephanie, you have the floor.
Also, I want to thank you for your time tonight. Um, for those of you who don't know my assistant manager, this is Trishna. And also here is just Deanna Bond. Um, so we're here tonight because I, I seriously need help. I am absolutely between rock and a hard place. Um, I've given you some paperwork, we'll throw it together, but, um, we have been chronically understaffed. We work seven days a week, we work holidays, we work emergencies. Um, and the problem is, is that we are understaffed for this, for the staff to animal ratio is unbalanced. So if you look at that sheet that I gave you with the shelter comparisons, some of the other shelters that I called around state, you'll see that right now we're about a hundred and seventy animals, probably pushing close to two hundred with some litters that are due any time. I have a very small staff, and the closest one to us is Calhoun, and they average ninety-two. And our budgets are about the same. Now, the other thing is, is that the, I don't think people in this community understand what the workload entails. And I would love to have people come out and I would walk you through it, but it is grueling work that we begin. I'm often there, I'm, I'm pretty much there every day at four thirty. And I begin by helping staff on the floor because there are too many animals. When we have giant litters of puppies, you have to clean them four to six times a day. So kittens, puppies, that's four to six times. There's formulations that different associations and national kennel groups offer, and per those formulations, we need three people just to feed the main kennel, to clean and feed the main kennel. Then there are dishes, there's laundry, there is medicating animals, which takes forever. There is dealing with animals that are vicious. There is frequently calls from police or citizens that need help, and oftentimes, we have to go and compare response with these. So I've given you, um, some photographs of a woman who was knocked to the ground and mauled by a dog. We managed to catch the dog, save dog, mauled a gentleman. Two others, doing, two other dogs came and attacked that man just as our ACO was driving on two of them. Police took the man to the hospital. That dog was in our care for, you know, seven to ten days, but it took us forty-five minutes, two of us, just to get a catch pole on that dog, work the catch pole over the top of the knuckles of the hickets on that outside kennel. Forty-five minutes, two of us. And then we took the catch poles and literally had one on each side, so the dog was sort of in a cross tie. And then we had to get it up in the truck, and the dog was too vicious for us to try to utilize ourselves. I took two of that that has different equipment than we do. There's things like that, people just don't understand. So our days are long, they are hard, the, um, the staff animal ratio is terrible. We can't plan vacations. Um, I could tell you, or Trish could tell you about our experience over Christmas.
Oh, so around Christmas time, Stephanie was out on vacation. Um, had one employee come in and she told me she broke her wrist like in three different spots. Um, another Jake here, she had the flu. And, um, the other one had a sinus, really bad sinus infection. So it was literally just me, and I didn't have anybody else I could call to get any help. Also, another thing I would just like to say is, um, oh, just I would like to spend more time being able to get these dogs adopted. And without any help, and I'm always back there just cleaning, which I don't mind doing the hard work. I really like my job. I love these animals. But I would really like to see more of them get adopted, so I need to take pictures of them, submit them to recipes and just that sort of thing.
During Christmas, we actually had to call on volunteers to fill in where staff would normally be because we didn't have anybody that could fill in. Um, so the turnover rate for shelters, um, managers usually last about three years. Um, hourly workers that are doing a lot of the heavy work are less than that as because there's inadequate staffing, there's S and T-ism because, you know, work comp, animal bites, um, just being sick. I mean, I myself, I can tell you, I've picked up several different pathogens that I've, you know, gone to the doctor for. So I mean, it's just, it's chronic stuff that you're working through. The workloads are basically unsustainable. The working conditions are difficult. Um, the building was not designed to be a kennel. Um, its conversion failed. The drains aren't sloped, steep enough. Um, the chain link between the kennels, a lot of it is pulled up from the dogs. We have dogs that actually bind to the top. I've actually gotten on an eight-foot step ladder and tried to get a fifty-pound dog down because its legs were wrapped into the chain link. So I mean, it's crazy stuff that people, I don't think really understand. What Trish and I wanna do is we wanna spend more time working on fundraising, um, doing the marketing side and getting animals out. We have increased our rescue base somehow. We're working with New Haven, Tennessee, Hudson, New York, and some other places. We wanna expand on that. Um, I've made great inroads with Greater Birmingham Humane Society. They have helped us with autopsies. They have helped us, um, they have given us tremendous rates on spay and litter. Um, what else have they done? Oh, they surgeries, surgeries, yeah.
Twenty chihuahuas from us.
They did. Yeah, just two weeks ago, we had twenty dogs come in at one time for a order, and I called them up and I said, Allison, I need help. What can you do? And she said, I'll get my guy there tomorrow, you know? So I mean, there's things like that where we're connecting. The agency, the ponder sheet that's called CARE in Auburn is run by a lady named T.J. McCollum. She's really a neat lady. Um, I'm trying to get together, I'm trying to get together with multiple agencies. I think there's some really big fundraisers to do. I used to. I used to do those in DC, and it's really big, cool stuff, and I would love to do that here. Um, and, you know, just bringing in different community advocacy and other groups, but I can't because I'm on the floor, pleading from 4:30 until about 11 or 12, and then we have a stream of people come in. We have, since she was able to fix the number on Google, the phone is ringing off the hook. And so now we have like, you know, we're constantly running and somewhat muttering under, maybe some curse words under our breath, and the phones ringing, and we're trying to run and get the phones into the animals, to the visitors, chase a dog that maybe got out of the kennel. It happens a lot.
We do have a few good people working here now, and I just, I don't want them to leave because they get burnt out, and, you know, constantly have them be like, "Hey, can you come in on your off day? You know, can you come in on your off day? Can you come in early at 6:00? Can you stay late?" And I just really don't want to lose these people, because I can tell they actually care and they're there.
How many people is it currently, Stephanie? It says three full-time plus, so five. So with you guys and two more people, that's it? Because that's what it said.
Yeah, I mean, and so, she's supposed to be my assistant manager, I'm supposed to be in the office. We're on four, because of the number of animals, so I mean, this is a good opportunity to beg people to spay and neuter their animals.
Why do you think we have so many more animals than Calvin County or Coleman County? Because there's nothing else nearby, so just play the card?
I think, I think this county has become a dumping ground. I can tell you, um, several months ago, I got a call from somebody, and they insisted that we take these dogs, so within a period of 18 hours, 36 dogs came in. Twenty-one of them were from one single property. Now, I can't tell, like, right now, we're out of cages, you guys, we're out of crates. We're out of, we're out of kennels. I don't know what to do, I mean, you know.
Where do we get animals from? They're not just from the city limits, right?
We, we do get some, you know, from just outside the city limits, and we have expanded that, because we took that 20,000 to help the county. So, you know, there are some grants out there, there's the Ware Grant, you know, through TJ, in fact, TJ McCullough submitted our name to get that grant, and what they would do is free spay neuters for like a year, um, for any animal that we could bring in. I said, "You know what, if we get that grant, I swear to God, I'm gonna go with a truck and a trailer, and I'm picking up every animal I see, and I'm gonna haul them down there." But people just have got to start thinking about this, it's $30. Vouchers go on sale again over at Mudcutts on 14th from 9:00 to 12:00, $30.
So Stephanie, so you guys are open seven days a week, so that means you probably is 365, too, every day? So how many, how many shifts is it out there?
One.
So just what are the hours?
7:30 to 4:00, but I'm there 4:30 to 4:00 most days, pretty much every day. Today we're supposed to be Monday off.
And the Plan Cusa, I'm sorry, the Plan Cusa County Shelter, that fizzled, right?
Yeah, it collapsed.
So I wonder if we're getting animals also from the rural counties that are around us?
Well, I do think this county has become a dumping ground, but I do, like, I had a call, and this, this is kind of called, it kind of irritates me, and a woman called me, and she said, "Steph?" And I said, "Yeah." She said, "So I, I'm in predicament." And I said, "Well, what is it?" And she said, "Well, I got a dog, or my uncle's got a dog." I went, "Uh-huh." She said, "He's got 10 puppies." And I went, "Oh, I can't, I can't help you." She said, "Well, I, I need some help, I mean, he needs to go get the dog fixed," and I gave her some ideas on how to do that. She said, "No, I'm just really frustrated, because I took two puppies from reverse litter." So I mean, it was like the whole family's involved in the problem, but nobody will go and pay the $30 to get the dog fixed.
So Stephanie, so we're seven days and 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. every day, right?
Yeah.
So does that mean some days, there's only two people there?
Yeah, but a lot of days where there's just two people there, a lot.
So, and you're saying, so what does an average day look like? What are you saying, you need at least three people there every day, so you can rotate, and people can take days off? Because, um, and I also want to ask too, how, how long have the people that you had been there? Like, how long have you guys been there? Because I know the turnover rate is...
In September, it'll be three years if you count the time I was with Tip Force. I was in Tip Force for about nine months before I came on the city.
So are you the longest employee that's been out there? Okay, alright, uh, my next...
Didn't we hire another employee, about 10?
Yeah, I think they did. So what happened?
What you're saying from your paperwork is the rate is too low, and Tip Force can't give anybody to work there.
That's the problem, too.
So 13 to 15 is the number that they think they need to be able to fill?
Yeah.
I know, but we still, we're still gonna have to, I'm just, I'm just trying, I was thinking out loud.
So, you know that, I mean, we have been looking for money, and Chief Muse was gracious enough to offer, um...
I know, but even if, even if we raise the rate, that means we're gonna have to bump the people who are already there to...
And taking the funding from the PD don't work for me. They don't, they don't sit well with me.
So, we're gonna have to come up with a plan. So, and I don't think we don't come up with it.
Are you going to, I mean, how are we gonna do this, then? Because I mean, are you going to talk to Tip Force and change your rate, okay? I mean, because...
Yeah, I know, but even if you do that, you still have to, even if we go up on that, we're gonna have to, in reality, their pay is gonna have to go up too, right? I mean, is it gonna put them, like, is that gonna mess with the people that are already working there? It's not gonna mess with them? So Jane, what do, have you done those numbers to see what that look like if we increase the Tip Force pay? I'm just, I mean, it's an option, we still have to...
I've been understaffed for seven years.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking, have you done the math?
They didn't fix it, she's tired, she's burned out.
Jane, have you done the math or not? Jesus, I'm...
They're burned out.
Well, have you done the math, then? So we can fix it. We can't fix it without math. You're HR, you handle the money, so what is the math?
I don't handle the money.
You, well, you hire the people, you out here creating job descriptions, we didn't ask for it.
These are the people that need the rate, the people actually working there.
But they, that's not what she's asking for. That's not what she's asking for.
Still, I think we can do it and hire, on to the new rate, Tip Force, and what you were talking about is getting you out to further help the adoptions and out from the back, and hiring these temp agents in to do more of the, the work in the back and have you guys available. Yes, you're still gonna have a problem of a full house, but I think if you have more people, you're gonna empty the house, so to speak, a little quicker.
Let me ask this.
Hold on, hold on. I have a question.
I know, hold on, just a little more. I'm trying to figure out, even if we go up on the rate, we still gotta figure out where we're gonna pull the money from. You can't decide to spend the money until we decide where we're gonna, we're gonna pull the money from. So you were saying use unused salaries. So even if we use unused salaries, you calculated that towards the old rate, correct? Or did you calculate it towards the $15 now, the increase?
I calculated it for somebody starting in June, at least, or something like that.
I know it, but for what dollar amount? Because you gave us a couple of things.
13, well, and, you know, Chief Muse has said he would transfer $13,135.
What, what dollar amount did you calculate that at? What pay rate did you calculate that at?
$13?
$13, okay.
No, no, I'm asking that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. You calculated that being...
$14.69.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, thank you. Alright.
Let me ask this, what's the turnover rate with Tip Force employees? Do you, you get them trained, do you get them out there, and then how long do they normally last?
Usually, I mean, they stay, for the most part. I mean, there's been a lot of people who just come out there and they couldn't, they were there two hours. Here's a bunch of those, I've seen. But I mean, some of the poor people I have here, Jane, Matthew, who came to us, a couple of citizens, Tom, you know, who live there. We do get some that, um, we try to interview them first, um, and we do get some that come out and they can't handle the work, or, you know. The working conditions turn a lot of people off, which is a big problem, too, for us. I mean, not so much, the working conditions are hard, but we don't have a break room. The building is in a decrepit state, so like, we don't have a kitchen, we don't have a break room. They go out to their cars, turn on their cars in the winter for heat, air conditioning in the summer, and they eat in the car.
Okay, alright, let's...
It's unfair, though.
I know, but that's, that's another issue, and we can address that, but right now, we need to address this one. So, alright. So this one, you did a $14.95, and there is enough money, $14.69, and there is enough money in your unused salaries to cover us for the rest of the year? That's what you're saying? Okay, alright. And then hopefully, your plan is to hire somebody full-time, and we'll actually, this position to be budgeted for next year?
Correct.
Right, okay? So, um, I think we do need to do it, but this is my question. Do you think, because, I mean, you keep bringing up all the issues we have, and they are a lot of issues, you're having a lot of problems, so you think that getting one more person is gonna help solve the issues we're having at the animal shelter?
I don't think it'll help solve them, but I think it'll ease the workload, and it'll, it'll help the scheduling problems that we've had. I feel guilty, like, trying to take a vacation, because that's what it does to them.
Alright, so if, so if we decide to do this, Stephanie, it would be nice to get some, some updates after you put somebody in that position to see how it's going.
Okay.
Because we just need to make sure that there's not something else that we're supposed to be doing, you know, to help make it better out there.
Yeah.
Also, um, I know you keep saying you got other issues, but we haven't been given any other issues in writing. We can't help you with anything unless you submit it to us in writing and request some sort of assistance with it, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay, so...
Requesting, you know, that soon.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm serious, though, but you, you do understand that, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely.
So yes, but just because we're talking about it amongst people in the community and things like that, we don't know, you know what I'm saying? And probably shame on me for not visiting the animal shelter, but until you formally request it from the council, we can't help you.
What about the air unit and stuff? Are they able to get warmer? Where do we stand with that?
I mean, it's, it's functioning as it can be for what's in that part of the building. It wasn't designed for kennel, you know what I'm saying? And there's lots, I mean, I've visited loads of kennels recently, it's amazing, all different windows and the spaces on them, so...
Well, Stephanie, you get a list of, um, issues or things that need to be addressed, and we'll just take a look at that list and see what we can do, but I do think, right now, we do have to get you guys some help, and Chief is gonna help cover that cost, and you've already done the math, at the, I'm gonna say it wrong, $14.65?
$14.69.
$14.69.
Permission to address the council, Ms. President?
Go ahead.
You know, we sit here and we talk about use, unused salaries, and I know, I think me and you touched on this, uh, last week in conversation. You know, we have a lot of retirees that's already retired, and we got some that's going to, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we said we'd take those unused salaries and we'd put them in a fund to pay for retirees' what? To pay for retirees' what? When they retire, why did we say we would set that, those unused salaries aside?
But didn't we pay the consultant for the City Clerk's office out of that?
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm asking to make a point, guys. I, I want to help the animal shelter. I thank God we have a good animal shelter, everybody brings their dogs here. Don't tape it the wrong way. We get in a habit of using unused salaries, and we didn't put anything back last year because we didn't have any to use. You see what I'm saying?
Alright, so...
So what I'm saying is, we need to be careful when we're talking about using unused salaries, because if not, then we're not gonna be able to pay for the benefits. We told retirees, we paid for when they retired, and I know we've got some that's going to retire this year, actually, we've got more than some.
Alright, so two things need to happen then. So either we decide if we're gonna use those unused salaries to pay for this, or we're gonna pay it out of the general fund, and Shannon, make sure you make a note, so you should have two notes for budget. One is to make sure that, um, we start replenishing that money for the, um, unused salaries, and two is to make sure that an additional person is requested on her budget line item.
I've already got an add-on, yeah.
Yeah, just want to make sure, because we don't want to get to budget, and, which we're gonna go line by line anyway, so we don't...
Now, and, and, now, if we don't want to do the, uh, the, what we said we'd do for retirees, and we want to mix that, and we want to use the unused salaries, that way, then I would feel more comfortable, I just don't want us to keep getting in a habit of doing it over and over and over, and we can't keep our commitment to the, uh, people that is serving us.
Right now, we're looking at almost $100,000 in unused salaries that they're using.
Okay.
So, we're gonna do that, but we need to make sure, is it on the, um...
I'd rather take it from the general fund today, because we just got a, uh, update, I really don't want you to pull it from the police department.
It doesn't matter to me, as long as we do it, so we can take a vote on where we want to pull it from. Which, which, which number is it?
I don't know.
Is it only to be considered, Shannon?
No.
Alright, so we need to add that, but we also need to add it at the, um...
I'm gonna say the rate wrong again.
$14.69.
At that rate. So can somebody, um, get an add item ready, please?
Well, we gotta add them. So that's my work technique.
So what are we gonna do? I mean, I don't, so are we gonna take it from the general fund or from the unused salaries?
I think from unused salaries, because there's gotta be so much unused salaries left over.
And that's, I mean, that is a form that's coming from the central.
Alright, well, are you good with that?
One thing too, though, I think we need to cut Jane a little slack on the Tip Force stuff, because we didn't all ask for that prior to it, and this was provided to us for the actual cost of hiring in an employee. You know, and if she wasn't pre-prepared for that, that's kind of hard to come off, right, off the top of her head.
What?
What, I'm sorry?
She said we should cut turns and slack.
With the Tip Force stuff?
Alright, so we're gonna, um, just take it from the unused salaries. And Stephanie, so next council meeting, you're gonna have a list of things that need to be addressed at the animal shelter, and we can expect an update from you monthly?
Sure.
Alright. Is that it?
We'll get that add, add on here tomorrow.
Okay, hold on.
We can have some other add items going?
Yeah, hold on, so we do have, um, I do have something else that I, um, I do need to address, so that's the last one.
Ma'am, I'm all...
Y'all go ahead.
You sure?
Yes, I'll be right back.
But Little League, too, right?
Oh, yeah, because we got, we got two things. But Shannon, you didn't put Little League on this, um...
You sent us a text message when I was sick, and I don't even remember, you sending that, like, I went back and looked at it just the other day.
Because I know, we talked about a lot of stuff during text messages, that was the only thing.
Yeah, and with the COVID.
Okay, and I almost forgot that. So I think, and I'm gonna say this wrong, Steve Kinn is here?
Yes, same president is here as well.
Alright, so, um, you guys can come on up, um, and I do apologize for that being, um, left off, and from my understanding, they're gonna request the usage of the bottom fields, right?
Yes, ma'am, um, as you know, we don't currently have a contract with the bottom...
So you might come in, please?
As y'all know, we don't currently have a contract with the bottom field that the city owns over there at, uh, Wingard Park, and it's been sitting basically empty for this past year, and Geral Softball, when we talked to them in their initial contract, when they brought in their charter and their insurance and everything, expressed an interest that they may be interested in using those fields should they remain vacant, and I reached out to the district commissioner for Little League, and he said that their boys haven't had an official charter since 2021, I think it was. So, we're concerned those fields have basically been abandoned, and, um, we don't want to see city fields that's just sitting there not being used, especially when we have a parent-run organization that could definitely use those fields.
And they wrong, so they basically need the space, too, correct?
And they've been...
They're doing a fantastic job of softball, they're growing, they've added the younger age groups, the space is much, much needed, and we've assured them that should they take on that project, that, um, arts and rec would help us a man-hours, you know, some stuff to get that field ready, hopefully for them next year, if everything goes through.
So let me ask you, so what would, what would that look like as far as their contract? So would they get a new contract, would the field be added to their contract, and then, uh, we also have to evaluate the, um, conditions of those fields, too, because we don't want we don't wanna, like, what conditions are they in? 'Cause I know, we don't wanna turn it over to them and then...
I've got the grass on it two weeks ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, the field, baseball fields can come together pretty quick, especially with the, the right people working on them. Um, I obviously have a lot of experience working on them. Um, we would definitely bring someone into laser level, the infield, 'cause you would need to remove the grass, uh, on the infield and the pitching mound, and once they got out of the way, then the rest of it's just a lot of spraying weeds, cutting grass, cleaning up edges.
Okay, so my next question is, what about the, um, the contents from, um, Little League boys that are in there? So, um, and I know, I asked Lynn one time to reach out about that, um, to the contact for the Little League boys to see about, you know, actually getting the charters. I thought, I thought we were gonna end up with a charter and, and be able to enter a contract, but we weren't. So what about setting up a timeframe for them to have their things removed?
Well, that is, that would be built in all of that, the boys would be gone.
You said the building?
Yeah, every, everything there has been built by the boys, Little League, including the field on the top.
So.
And there, I have, have, got, got a lot of messages, I could pull them up later, but I will give the names that they will have a fall off season, so I think the Parks and Reg, the Girl Softball, which I have two girls in softball, and, uh, Little League Baseball, they all need to go sit down before, and talk about it before it even comes to foretown. That way, everybody's on the same page, it's not just, uh, oh, hey, just throw this up here.
It wasn't, but I, it wasn't just threw up there.
No, but I, but I, what I'm saying is, it, you know, it's not even, you just said it wasn't on the agenda, but it was supposed to be.
Yeah, and I request it, and I also got this agenda when everybody else got it, I didn't even get to approve the agenda.
But, but what I'm saying is, it wasn't on there, so other people, and, you know, 'cause we get it publicly, it's, you know, they put it out in the newspaper, on the website, and I think it makes, everybody in the city needs to have a chance to look at it and make some more therapy, and before any decisions are made. I think the Parks and Reg, which I don't have a problem, just trying to look like softball and girls, uh, the Parks and Reg, and just let them have it, you know, 'cause that's where, which way it's going either way, but, but you get the girls, because they do a great, I'm not saying nothing bad about any of the Little Leagues, because I got two girls that love it, they play every single year, they have since they was four years old. But I think the Parks and Reg board, the Little League softball, and Little League baseball, all need to sit down and have a, a meeting before.
There is no.
Hold on, hold on, y'all, hold on.
There's what?
Hold on.
There's no Little League baseball.
Play.
Yes, we, we.
Hold on, hey, y'all, Blake, Blake, come up, come up, so we can hear you, and then, and we'll, but you.
But he was saying, you know, twenty-one, this is twenty-five, and my son played in the regionals two years ago.
Hey, Blake, come to the microphone.
I'm just saying, if your numbers aren't right, your numbers aren't right, I'm not, I'm just, what I'm saying.
I know, but I guess I'm confused as, because we did reach out, I even had Lynn to reach out, if there was time to get, like, the proof of charter and the insurance, because the issue is...
Okay, but, but it was, it was not time really at the time, because when it got thrown in, and just to be honest, when all of this came about with the Little League, was when the other city clerk was in and a couple other people, they, they formed together, and they went to the, it's, it's all in black and white, no.
I don't.
There's been no charter.
If you go back and look at the videos that they post every week and every month, you can see how the trends start. But all I'm asking is that the Little League girls, board, the boys baseball, and the reg, they decide, they set up a meeting, and then bring it back to them.
Well, I'm gonna have to disagree with you as far as that. The reason this has went on so long is because of the people that, um, have been involved. If it was anybody else from the outside, we'd have, we'd have been interested, but that's just a God's option. Yeah, we, we would have. And the problem is, the city is liable because we have people on city property without insurance.
Well, they don't have to go get on, 'cause they can stay up top with insurance.
You were just on there cutting the grass today.
Yes, and, and I am insured, if anything happens, I will sue, I will find a way.
But we don't, but we don't have a contract with you.
Okay, well, you can get one, but, but y'all denied it. Y'all kept denying it. I mean, you can go back, watch your own videos, of the words that y'all have said, and there's one person up there that completely hates the Little League, and that's where it all started.
And you're here, you're the representative for, uh, Little League.
I'm a, I'm a, a parent.
Okay, you're a parent.
I'm a parent, 'cause I got girls that, that love softball, they play every year, they play, you know, I don't want nothing to happen to a girl softball. But like I said, I just think all three boards need to go have their own meeting, talk it over, decide, because they may decide, and if Steve wants it, it's up to him, they may decide just to turn it all over to the Parks and Reg and let it go with it, because they do a great job at the Parks and Reg.
Yeah, well, Steve was the one that, that asked me to have, yeah, have this on.
I understand, but there's also, but there's also, hasn't been a meeting with all three boards to get, and I think that's what needs to happen before any decisions are made.
Can we get a list of who's on the board for the baseball?
Do you know who's on that board? Because we've been trying to get that for a long time, but the, the issue is, there, there's no charter, there's no insurance. And then I even, um, got a message from somebody, I'm not gonna name anybody, to tell me, hey, Tiffany, I got everything together, you'll be getting it soon, and that was, that was three months ago.
But the National has not chartered our Little League since twenty twenty-one.
And that's not true, because.
It is true.
My son was at the regionals in twenty-two or twenty-three. He just now turned fifteen.
So let me ask you this, let me ask you this, like, look.
So, 'cause the twenty-one's not correct.
So, so let me ask you this, what, what is the issue with just proving you got a charter and your insurance? Like, like, how, how hard is that?
I don't have that. That's not my responsibility. I'm just saying what I think, as a parent, as everybody, and then instead of any backdoor stuff, not saying it is that, I'm just telling you how I feel.
Okay.
That that leads, that's what needs to happen, and I can get you a list of everybody on the board, Steve, and I think they all three need to go somewhere, have a meeting. They decided, they can report it, do whatever, that way, nobody can go back, same thing, and then come to y'all and have to make a decision. I'm, just because it come up here tonight, I don't think, because there ain't, but maybe one thing's been, made a decision or not anyway. I think it just, they all three need to go sit down, decide, 'cause really, I wouldn't mind if Parks and Reg take over, they do great. They take over softball and everything.
But you want the park to work to take over the girls, though, right?
Oh, oh.
It gets paid on behalf of the girls, so.
I said, I don't, I wouldn't mind. My girls play, they will probably play until they age out.
All right.
So I'm not speaking on behalf, I'm saying what I think.
Blake.
All right. Who says he brought me up here to leave? I told him, I told him to back.
I know, it can talk to us, but not him, though.
Well, I tell him not to speak to me.
All right.
Yeah, I'll be careful, the girls are organized.
Yeah, it is, but, and we, we've asked for a charter, and Lynn, do you wanna chime in on this? Because you've even reached out to try to get a, um, contract with the boys as well too, right? But that's you have with the contract with the girls.
I just think there's so much going on in the city right now, I don't think nobody needs making up a decision.
I know, we still, we still have to.
I think, like, unless it's helping the animal, really, I think that's, I don't think it should be done, or helping the police or the fire department, 'cause right now, there's so much crap going on in the city, that I look on all these Facebook pages and the videos and watching.
You gotta stay off, you gotta stay off Facebook.
Well, I'm not.
So Lynn.
The videos, the videos of.
Blake, you had your time, you, you actually had a lot of time. I'm trying to talk to our city attorney, I'm sorry, what was that?
I didn't know if you wanted me to get that up there.
No.
Okay.
Lynn. So, do you wanna chime in on this? Because we've actually reached out a few times trying to get a contract with the boys.
Well, I'll be glad to make it from now on, say, with, with.
But that's not, but that's not what we're here, the, I mean, we're five months into the city, I mean, into the year, we're five months into the year. So we asked for that months ago, and we don't have it.
And softball season's over.
But they're asking for, uh, they're asking for these fields so that they can prepare for the next season, and that's usually how things work.
It can happen next week, but I think all three boards should sit down and talk, and bring it back.
But, there is no board, we've.
There is a board, and by tomorrow afternoon, I'll put y'all's names on board.
All right, so Steve, what are you proposing?
I mean, it's been a long time since I've been involved with Little League, but I know in Cow Ripken that I was over for twelve years. Um, you, you have to have a board that's voted on, you can't really appoint yourself. Um, you'll have a president or a representative, and then you'll have a board that's voted on. So I have no issue with Little League baseball whatsoever. My issue is, baseball fields are a premium in my part of town. We have five hundred and four kids playing baseball, I don't know how many y'all have in softball, and to have a field sitting there to date that the city's responsible for is just not a good thing. So anything we can do to get kids playing games on that field, boys, girls, whatever, that's my benefit.
All right, and I don't have a problem with them, I mean, the girls have done a good job, they've maintained their fields, turning their paperwork on time, I mean, we had no issue getting the contract, we told them what we needed, they got it for us, and I'm just still, in my opinion, we should let the girls have the field.
And all I'm asking is wait till next, to the next meeting, to make the thing, and let all the boards sit down and discuss it.
Do I have any comments?
I agree, let the girls have the field, we try.
Of course, you hate them, let the girls have the field, maybe, maybe.
Ashley, do you have any comments?
I don't.
Okay. All right, so Steve, and then I wanted Laura to not leave, so she could have had some comments.
Just so everybody knows, I'm fine with the girls having the field, but I think that all three boards should sit down and discuss it before it's made. That's all I'm asking. I'm not saying, because, like I said, my girls are gonna play, why don't you have your board's field, so we get them.
We don't have to, because what we need to do, um...
We have no problem with softball.
I mean, if the majority agreed, I, I, that's why I told, asked Laura not to leave, so she can stay and have her comments. I mean, so we get, when you get with Lynn and get with them.
So you, you can't give it to the next meeting to make the decision and just let the three boards sit down and talk within a week.
Are you guys, are you willing to sit down? There, well, but you're not, but you're not a Little League, you're, you just said you're just a parent, you're not speaking on behalf of Little League.
I didn't say if, if I'm on the board or not.
Well, are you on the board?
I'm just saying, I can't give you any information, that's what I said.
But that's what, y'all, that's what they've been saying this whole time.
I just ask in a simple question and request, can we please, Ken, Steve, and the Little League boys sit down and have one meeting? We decide, and if it's the girls take over, the girls take over, if the Parks and Reg takes over, Parks and Reg take over.
Steve, I think, since you asked for.
I don't have a problem having a meeting, I would request that Lynn be there.
Yes.
Because there's gonna be some legal issues involved as far as the breach of the previous contract due to not having insurance on those fields at that time. So that's a conversation we definitely can have, and we can break, I don't think they're in a rush, we got till, you know, next year before the next season is.
But there still needs to be a dent lining up, because we've been doing this for over five months.
Definitely need to have this only next to now.
Yeah, that's what I said by the next, next.
And let's make a decision ASAP, but it doesn't need to be pushed on, because a lot of work will need to be done with that field.
All right. All right, so next meeting, there better be a list of board members and contact information.
Well, I mean, we should have had our meeting with all three boards by then, and then we can make a decision.
And bring it to you.
And I will make a recommendation for Parks and Reg too.
All right.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Steve.
That's all my blessing.
All right, so the next, um, the next, I really need Laura to come back, I don't know where she went. Can somebody call Laura?
Josh, can you?
But it's attached to the, it's attached to the box for their board, it's, it's about moving.
I know, but she went to the restroom.
I think she's in the restroom.
Hi.
I could've called, I think she's in the restroom.
Okay.
I texted her, she's in the restroom, she got sick, she's coming back.
All right, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't want no problems with the next thing we're about to say. So guys, what we're gonna do, we're just gonna take a five-minute recess, sorry about that, everybody. So, um, the next thing I wanna bring, um, to the council's attention, um, I'm not asking a question, nobody has to make a comment, nobody has to, um, say anything, it's, it's not a question. So it was brought to my attention, um...
Microphone.
Uh, my microphone is on. So I did get a call from the Ethics Commission, it was brought to my attention that some raises were given without council approval. So, um, I know that two were given, I don't know how many, but I am requesting that those raises be rescinded and that money be paid back immediately. It was given, um, it was not authorized by the council, and it was given illegally. And I'm also, um, gonna request that our city attorney, um, get a forensic audit on our financials, because no raises, no money, anything should have ever been approved without council. And if you guys, um, disagree, you can let me know, but I am requesting that those raises